Okay, it is Tuesday, February 12, 2019. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pleasure of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning up.
Minister reports received and filed?
January 2019, Florida's file and January 2019, treasures reconciliation report filed.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a home builders association board meeting tonight, or this afternoon, planning commission meeting tonight. We've got our meeting with governor tomorrow, SAVWAS management district board meeting tomorrow, home builders association general meeting tomorrow night, if you want to come along. Valentine's Day early. Had an FFA dinner, Blair Oak's FFA dinner Saturday, if you don't have any plans. About it for now.
I probably need to share a couple of things with you guys, but so we have a meeting scheduled with Senator Bernskeiter tomorrow at 12:45. And then a meeting with Rudy Veed at 1:00. And then a meeting with Dave Griffith at 2:30. If you could attend, we'll be over at the Capitol, but I know there's a little time in between those, so. Meeting with a couple homeowners and Larry Bishop on Thursday. And then a meeting with David Boils at EMS Thursday afternoon. Looks like it for the rest of the week.
Okay. Got a meeting this afternoon with the Springfield Cardinals. We're working on a Colle County day at the Springfield Cardinals, which is going to be one of our United Way fundraisers. And I've got the meeting with the governor down, but then I have to go be a, to compass health chili cook-off and be a judge at noon, so.
Okay.
And then Friday is KWS. Do you want to do it?
No, I hate to bother you.
Since we put it off last Friday.
No, if the weather's good, I'll be in Fulton at an FBLA, at their state conference judging that, so if I'm not there, I can do it, but...
I can do it if you're busy, so.
Did you do it last?
Maybe, but I can do it again.
Okay, okay, I'll let you, yeah.
Just had a meeting talking about...
They'll get to play my song.
Your song.
Yeah, you're just mad because you don't have one.
I know. And then don't forget Monday nights, did you say Lincoln Days? Did you mention that?
Yep.
No, I forgot that.
Yeah, we got that.
I didn't even go into next week yet.
Oh.
I didn't want to announce all of us, I want to get through the agenda.
Okay, okay.
You want everything I'm going to for us?
Okay, okay, let's keep going. Appointment by commission, appointment to the Central Missouri Community Action Committee, and we soccered, I mean Chris said that he would be our representative for...
Central Missouri Community Action, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris to the Central Missouri Community Action Committee.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
That's quick. Commission comments, bids and contracts, approval and signing of letter agreement with MODHSS.
Good morning.
So, right now, Department of Health and Senior Services has a computer program called Essence. It's the electronic surveillance system for their early notification of community-based epidemics. So, all the chief complaint data from ERs go in there. So, we can, we have access to it, and we can go in and Google it for, research it for any chief complaint. So, if you go in there and put cow, it puts all, gives you all the incidents where people have come into an ER and complained about a cow stepping on them, cow hitting them, them hitting a cow, anything like that. So, any chief complaint data. So, it doesn't say what they were actually diagnosed with, but what they went in there complaining about. Well, they're wanting to enhance that system and add more data for opioid surveillance. And for us participating in their conference calls and giving them feedback on the system as they're developing it, and us helping them get a connection with the hospitals, they're going to pay us $3,000. So, this is just a letter of agreement, because it's quicker to get through their processes than a contract, to, for us to participate in that process with them. And it'll give us more meaningful data, too, when it comes to opioids, so.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I move that we approve and sign the letter of agreement with Missouri DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of the non-company to provide appraisal services for assessor's office. Thank you.
Is that someone who emailed us?
Yes. Jill.
No, I have one.
Last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last year.
Sorry.
So, these are just to hiring the non-company to do some of the appraisals on these properties?
That is correct. It's basically the same as what we did in 2015 and 2017. It's a huge help to our office.
Yeah, you emailed some numbers, too, about how many of them get sent over to, doesn't even have to go through BOE, and they try to challenge them.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the proposal with the non-company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How did Chris go through his surgery?
The surgery, he's home, he came home Thursday. Everything went well. It took longer than they had anticipated. I talked to Tracy. She said he is still in a lot of pain, but it's a different kind of pain now, not the pain that he had before, so it's just more the surgery. I haven't heard this week, but as far as we know, everything's going good.
Okay.
He has to wear that brace for eight weeks, so I'm sure that's a little uncomfortable, but as far as we know, everything's going okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Signing the electric monitoring system agreement.
Yes, sir. Received notification from the company that we have the electronic monitoring contact with on SilverLink, which is our alcohol monitoring. There's no additional cost, it's just reviewing the contract. I think they're on a trillion basis of this contract.
Is this for the ankle bracelet, or you said alcohol stuff?
It's, SilverLink is a handheld monitoring that we use for alcohol detection for, it's one of the pieces of equipment we had before. We had a separate company, SilverLink, and now the BI company has made SilverLink other needs, so they purchased that company, said this is the contract, there's no additional cost to us for equipment. It's the same cost.
And this falls under a cooperative agreement, the prices, right? It's the way I understood.
Yeah, we piggyback the state contract, so.
Good.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the agreement with BI Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't even go, I didn't even go to the meeting at the MAC training, because you know more than, it was the same people that spoke before.
Thank you. We tried to stay on top of it. Do you guys need a copy of this?
Nope.
No.
No.
I just see the original. Is it signed? Do you have one if there's any?
Yes, I'm signing it.
Yeah, and I'll just get that.
Yeah, if you, if you let me know, I have to email it back.
Okay. You just have one original in.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, council payable review?
I'd ask for approval of the council payable pending review.
Do we have any on there?
You do, I moved yours to this one.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm saying.
Okay. Medicare revalidation.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is, I'm not sure why I got it in. It said for the ambulance application?
Yeah.
Is that it, Jill?
That was roaming.
Where's it been? I think that's it.
You want, we can wait until Matt.
He sent me something the other day.
Yeah, he, me too.
It's just an application.
Yeah, this is, this is an ambulance license application.
Oh, we had to...
It's not Medicare.
We had, so the clerk would...
Can we just move on, and we'll come back to it?
Yeah, we'll come back to that, okay.
Matt's out there somewhere.
Okay, he's, yeah, he was roaming around. Funding a position for Taos Wardsville for sheriff's department.
So, all three of you are already aware, we've already talked about this. This is just us, the difference in the cost turns around.
Books, yeah, turned it.
Turned it.
So, but anyway, it's just a difference in cost for the year for the Taos Wardsville position, for just this year, moratorium, I guess you'd call it, and I think it's not more than $2,600, I think, or something, so. And we can absorb that pretty easy, unfortunately, due to the vacant positions we have right now since the beginning of the year, so.
And you're going to reach out and talk to them about future?
Yes, yeah, as soon as you guys got this approved, then I'll, I'll reach out, and I, and we'll have a good conversation with them to make sure they understand what all's going on with this.
So, what do you need from us, just an approval?
Well, I wouldn't sure, to be quite honest, because it's going to come, she's, it's going to change the way Debbie does her reimbursement, when she sends them a bill, and since, I know that you three, we've already, I've talked with you individually, so I know that we all agreed on it, but I don't know if we have to pass something for you to change that?
Well, I've been following the contract, as far as the contract goes, and it's the actual price of who's ever in that position, I charge them for.
Right.
And if I understand it right, we just don't want to increase it for this year, keep it the same as last year. So, I kind of like something in the, that would...
Right.
And the minutes.
Cover me from that contract.
And I don't know if that would just fall under accounts payable?
So, while we're talking about this, we probably need to talk about changing the schedule of when we bill them for that, because right now, we're crossing over years, and it makes it more difficult in determining that amount and what was payable at the end of the year. That would also make it easier for you, their contract, if it changed in January, would change with whatever salary changes we make most of the time. Last year was kind of an exception, but, because right now, we're billing for, I think, is it October, November, December, January, February, March at one time. So, it would be nicer if that contract would bill through December.
It's hard to do if I'm going to do it based on actual people.
Yeah.
You know, if I, if I guess, I mean, because I can't get it out at the same time I'm doing the last payroll of the year. I mean, I guess I could, but a lot to do at the end of the year, you know what I mean?
Right.
If I could bill ahead, maybe. I don't know if they'd want to pay it ahead, but...
So, you're billing for time accrued?
Yes.
And you're talking about how it fits into our, our budget here?
Right, so right now, the bill you just sent out runs through March, is that right?
Mm-hmm. I haven't sent it yet, but yes, March.
Yes, and we're crossing over years, so we need to book the portion for last year as receivable at the end of the year. The current year stuff is not receivable, because you're going to pay it in the current year. So, it, it's hard for us to split that invoice and be like, oh, well, this portion of it's payable and this portion of it's not.
So, what you're saying is go ahead and send out the March one, and then maybe send another one out in July, and then send the next one out in December?
Aye.
And then every six months, we would do it that way? Is that what you're...
Yes, I would like to get it to where, even if you, so are you sending it out in advance right now?
Just the, the March. But if we're going back to last year's, it wasn't hard, because it's the same price as last year. You know what I mean?
Right.
We're not going to increase it, so I know it's the same price.
I can see...
I do send, I would have to look at that contract again, because I thought I had the payment schedule set up by the way the contract is, but I can, I can look at it.
And we need to address that with the, with those individuals, too, to make sure that they're okay with how we change the payments.
Yeah, because they're used to it now.
Because they may have it set up, yeah. So, if you want to, I'll work with Debbie and Chris then on figuring out what, what a schedule will be, and maybe take a meeting with Taos and Wardsville and try to figure out what, if they're okay if we make those changes.
So, it goes through March?
Yeah, but I'm picking up some months from last year, is what she's saying.
She's billing six months at a time, but it's crossing over three in last year.
Contract goes through March, right, till the end of March?
The contract is ongoing until we want to cancel it. It's been a contract that was enforced when we first started.
So, that's an offset renewal.
So, you bill every six months, it's not necessarily a quarter, I think.
Right.
So, just change when you're billing them from.
Right.
Or not.
Well, but it should, it should equal out, I mean, so...
It's the same money, but it's just crossing over her accounting.
I know, but if it makes it easier to do the accounting part of it, then you don't have to go...
It's just hard to split that invoice, so right now, I almost have to have Debbie enter two invoices for the same period, one for last year's amount and one for this year's amount, so that we can book one as receivable year end, because the whole thing's not receivable year end.
Well, but you're not receiving it till this year, so that's when it should be received.
No, so...
Yeah?
No.
Yeah?
No. If you're on accrual basis, it's anything in the first 60 days.
So, you're going back and doctoring your books, basically.
We're going from cash to accrual.
Well, I don't know if it's the bill that was, I mean, we've got to do it on our political reports, too. If it's something that we were billed for in December, it'd have to be, it was an expense incurred back then, but maybe it's not going to be paid until this quarter, and this is just kind of vice versa.
Right.
So, I'll see if they're coming from, that's the fun part of that.
You've got to pay the expense in the year.
So, it was an expense to us as of December the 31st, so it was receivable, then they should have reimbursed us for last year's stuff.
I'm not going to argue with you about it, but anyway.
All right, because you won't get it by the end of the month.
You're not a bug.
Yeah.
Make me be the one to argue the whole time.
I mean...
I mean, you're billing for hours' work.
The last time, the original contract was 2008, so it's probably not a bad idea we really look at that again.
Well, I did a one in 2008.
It was signed in September 2008.
Okay, but there's, there's another one that I've done since then.
Yeah, maybe an SRO, I don't, I don't know.
No, it was, it was for Taos and Wardsville.
It was some other contract.
What if, what if I talk to them?
You're always going to be billing, I mean, you're always going to be billing across two calendar years or two budget years, I mean, so, I mean, even if you bill December, at the end of December, it's going to cross over.
Right, but the whole thing would be receivable, not just half of it.
So, you're saying just stop the bill in December, and then...
Right, I'm saying, could you bill January through June, and then can you, June through December, so that even though if, if it isn't paid as of the end of the year, that whole bill then is receivable, not trying to split it in half, and do half of it as one way and half of it as the other?
And you talk to them and see if they're okay with that?
Yeah, I was thinking, what if we just made the bills, we make them set bills, we make them July 1st, December 1st. That way, it gives them 30 days to pay the bill, it's paid within that calendar year, and then it's...
But you're setting up the month of December as receivable year end?
It does say that we will pay before October 31st and May 1st, two different times, but we can, we can do that, we can work with these, I'm sure they don't care, but...
Is it a monthly amount, or?
I don't know.
I showed them the monthly amount, but I charge it for six months at a time.
Right.
Well, I'll talk, I'll talk with them and find out what would be easier.
Yeah, just...
In case there is a different contract.
Work it out with them, John.
Sure.
Might be easier for them to be billed monthly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may be easier if they're...
Sorry, Debbie.
Send it up to three.
And if it's, but it may be, and it may be just one, so it may be, and it'd be a set price that we can agree on.
That's all right, throw some at me. I had a crappy day, aren't we?
Uh, January 1st, that you're going to get four years payments every quarter.
Sam hit me with that damn mallet here a minute.
And they know a half a month is coming, and we just build it.
It gets heavier.
No, I want you to smack me with the mallet.
Right, they don't pay overtime, they don't pay for...
I've got some allergies going, so I don't know, it just makes things funnier right now.
I guess.
I'll, I'll bring it up to them.
Maybe they'll have to vote on that.
I'm going to go to their council meeting.
Well, when you're meeting, you get down to two and a half hours.
Okay, I haven't mailed them yet, so I can avoid them yet again.
Well, I just need to split it, so even though they're going to get one bill, I need it as soon as possible.
To what?
Well, then I need to get them, too.
Thought he already signed it.
I didn't use, Marco doesn't understand it if he's getting one.
I didn't think, I didn't think he signed it.
That was the third page.
Okay.
Is that it for me? Any questions, comments, on the grounds?
No.
No, nothing from the gallery.
Good. Hey, you got enough copies of the newspaper? Saw your daughter on the front page, too?
Yeah, it makes me, Melody, she, she gave me one laminated, so thank you very much. She had a great time. It's a picture.
Okay.
It's a great picture.
I got a copy at home, if you would.
There you are, ma'am.
That was a better picture, yes.
Okay.
I hate everybody, so.
Discussion of stormwater system design at Public Works.
Swear to God.
See, Matt, you weren't here for the Medicare, so we just...
So, Eric had sent something through the other day on just some design work out there at that lot. That's the vacant lot that we bought from.
You want any copies of anything?
Right. Anyway, I know we had, they had done some work for the health department, and we agreed to pay for some concrete pipes and stuff there, and so, anyway, he just had some design work along with that, and I don't know how much was the total, Eric.
Look, you all agreed to pay for the pipe and all that at the site.
Right.
And then the design work, it included a little bit of, I think, topo work that kind of went along with the site plan that's ongoing with CNPS, and it's $5,700, some change.
So, I just, I didn't know if we talked about that, I just forgetful, or blocked it, anyway. So, we thought we'd just discuss it, but it's basically getting that storm, stormwater pipe and stuff in there, so they can start leveling out that side, make it usable at some point. So, the question is, is do we pay for it out of our capital, or do we want them to pay for it, or?
Well, I think they should pay for it.
So, is this a capital discussion, then?
We pay for the pipe out of your part of the sales.
Right, but you're wanting to pay for the design stuff out of our portion of the capital, too, right?
I thought that it would be, but maybe we can justify it out of the other one, too.
Right. Yeah, I was just trying to clarify, so. Anyway, so it's around $5,700, I mean, it is a property improvement, so.
It's our land, or something.
Man, you can kind of look at it maybe both ways.
Yeah.
But I just didn't remember having the conversation, and so, anyway.
Did you email all of us?
Probably didn't get on an attachment to the agenda, so I apologize, but I just had talked to Chris last week about it, and then he asked to put it on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, well, I'll just look for an email if you had sent it, just trying to see what all it entailed.
Yeah, I didn't have anything to you.
If it's going to be, if it's going to be a capital improvement, I mean, we need to have it on that discussion, whether we include it, or you want to do it right now, and get...
We have the pipe that's paid for and going to be delivered for installation. We're going to do that ourselves. That's already done.
So, how do you know what pipes you need if you don't have the design work?
Well, that's, the design work was done, we just got billed, you know.
Oh, so we already did it?
Yeah, 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 so it's...
They're going to pay for it somehow.
So, we approved getting that part done?
Debbie just sent you that, too, so.
I think I did. Or I sent you the wrong one.
Now, it's all coming together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need the design.
If I would have thought about it at the time, about the design part of it, I would have brought it up then, it just, it was kind of a, you know, do we want to do this or not?
Where have we got money for that everywhere? Maybe it's in the budget?
We just had some items identified in, in our capital, I mean, that doesn't mean anything was set in stone there, but...
Yeah, if it's in our capital, then it just makes that much less that we can spend on other stuff.
Right.
So.
Not a hard decision, just one way or the other. I don't think Eric's going to be heartburn over it one way or the other, so...
I, I, yeah, I'm...
Do they got it in their budget?
We have a miscellaneous stormwater line item that covers anything and everything that could do with stormwater. This, yeah, it's flowing through our lot, but it's conveying stormwater from other parts of the subdivision through us, so it can, it can, I can justify it taking our portion, but it is an improvement to our lot, so, you know, it's kind of both, but it's really just what y'all want.
It, it had to be done to improve the lot.
Yeah.
And we had to reroute the drainage and capture the stormwater, so that we could take a piece of property that's really not real functional, and make it into something that we can use down the road, so.
I think it's just pay for it. We'll see what the next issue, the discussion on public works, maintenance lot drainage work.
Are those the same, or?
I think, yeah, that's the same one.
That's just the same one? Oh, well.
There's not two items.
Oh, I was going to say, you're hitting us with two, then.
Maybe I got crazy.
Well, we have a lot of stuff going back and forth, because...
Apparently, yeah, it's the same.
Oh, well, shucks. I was going to say, we pay for one, you pay for the other.
So, he'll pay for the free one? The bar napkin drawing?
Design and the city.
So, just to clarify, Jeff, we have the pipe paid for.
Yeah.
We're going to build it.
And you're going to do the work?
We're going to do the work ourselves, ideally do it in the non-busy time of this time of year, when we don't have other stuff going on, and it's just a matter of paying for the design work.
I think take it out, capital improvements, it's our property, we're going to improve it. Public Works has already strained enough, I don't know, Kristen, Debbie?
It's coming. Going either way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like I work, so we'll pay for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Run like hell.
Hey, if we hurry, we can get our meeting done in less than an hour.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we got, we, we got Matt and two of them, we're going to go back to Medicare.
It's all right, I said to wait, hurry. Got to get Mattly's.
Revalidation. Four minutes. Four minutes.
Changed the people that are listed as authorized and unauthorized, or designated, so.
So, this is the Medicare revalidation?
That's to revalidate who is associated with the department. So, myself, taking off the previous names.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we sign the Medicare revalidation agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, EMS CAD's course approval.
I have a feeling that one's gonna be delayed. We had to put a sole source ad in the paper. So, I think we had to push that one for the 10-day.
Kristen, I think this is...
For sole source approval.
I don't think she had the ad to approve yet.
Thank you.
Basically, what this is, is the, the, in our billing contract, we have PWW, they'll reimburse us. Digitech would reimburse us for that training course for proper documentation, et cetera. The course is administered or owned by NAAS, and so, our NAAC, they contract with PWW to do it. So, we just have to sole source the course to NAAC, and then Digitech will reimburse us. So, this is just approval for a sole source to go that route. The paperwork's on its way. They're having problems pregnant. So, that's all this is.
So, is the sole source running in the paper currently, or?
No, we just needed permission to do that.
To run that?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And you're gonna have to get a flow chart with all these acronyms, I mean...
Right. So, what it'll end up being is what will probably truly be on the hook, as we discussed before. First, it's in our budget, and also, we'll get reimbursed that amount. The only thing that will be on the hook for after it's all said and done is about $2,000 in travel. The $15,000 that the billing company will reimburse us for.
Some of this was in the contract with Digitech or PWKRP in Cincinnati or something?
Right, so it was in the...
So, why do we even have to go through this?
Because in the contract, it listed PWW. PWW is the provider, the actual educator, but the course we have to pay to is NAAC. I didn't know there was a difference in them, because the only people that do the education is PWW. So, it's just an acronym issue, really on my part, so.
Well, I was just wondering, since we're contracted with Digitech and they're supplying it, why we're having to spend money on advertising it and go through this whole exercise?
So, we can do that, but we'd have to redo the contract with Digitech.
Here comes Mighty Mouse.
Well, all this is, is just an explanation of what the sole source ad is for. I don't know what I meant to, what you were explaining.
Can we get smaller printing?
More respects.
So, this all we're doing is approving the sole source for NAAC? Okay.
Okay.
Good?
Yes. Yes.
Jeff?
I don't know. Is it actually sole source?
Yes, sir. PWW's the only one that provides that education. PWW is the law.
Just seems like we're getting a lot of sole source stuff, so I was just curious. But I know that's why we're advertising it, because if it's not, then somebody can come in and say, hey, it's not, right? All right, not in the point to argue today.
Oh, come on.
No, I'm lying.
I move that we approve the sole source agreement for NAAC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You already got one.
I got one.
So, we're just approving, writing it in the paper. Someone could still come back potentially and contest it, so that's all we're doing today.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session? I do wanna point out the trophy. We got this, Jeff was the best behaved at camp in, in the last 10 years. So, we got this for Jeff being well behaved.
I'm pretty sure that's not what that's for.
They gave it to us. We're not really sure what it's for, but...
There's pictures that'll come out.
It's a traveling trophy, so we get it for a year.
Well, you know what it's for. It's for participation in Special Olympics. And we don't know if that's number of people that participated or number of athletes, but it was, Cole County had the highest percentage or highest number of either athletes or people that presented.
We had won it in 2006, too, so, but I still like the idea that it's, because Jeff behaved.
Sam, you can still believe that. It's all right.
That's gonna put in your office for a year.
Well, let's, let's have a plaque, put his name on it. Have it monogrammed, maybe on the trophy. Jeff Felsher Trophy.
He did, he was very well behaved.
Thanks, Mom.
Hey, look at this.
Oh, goodness.
It really did.
See, I'm telling you.
We did it in a half an hour, because we actually started late.
Yeah. Anything else?
No.
I don't think so. We took everything off, because we thought it was gonna be a busy day, and it was about there.
All right, I may, we go into closed session, percent, section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub 13.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, and legal action, sub one.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. All right.